Okay. Good evening. It is six o'clock. I want to welcome you to the February 20th meeting of the governing body. If you will please call this meeting to order and give your attention to Councilman Dobler, who will provide the invocation. Stand as you are able and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be quick. In lieu of a prayer tonight, I'd like to, you know, a week ago, we sat here and were in the glow, I guess, the afterglow of the Super Bowl. And then a day later, that glow dissipated in a hurry. Nobody here has answers to why, but I think what I'd like to do tonight is just have a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting in Kansas City. We probably all know somebody that was at least there that maybe didn't get injured, but was affected by it. And I think we were all affected by it to some extent. So just a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The councilman?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Brenda, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks. Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer. All right, we have eight present.
Thank you. Move on to appointments. Brenda?
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Carol Roberts to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term ending February 28, 2026. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Kevin Syke to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending March 1, 2026. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Michaela Kearls to the Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term ending February 20, 2026.
Okay, you've heard the appointments is read. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Kell. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Duncan.
Yes.
We have seven yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion's been carried. And as noted, I believe Carol Roberts, Kevin Syke, and Michaela Kearls are in the audience. If you could stand, please, so we can thank you for your service. Okay, agenda item number three, presentations. City manager.
Mayor and governing body, I am pleased to let you know that presenting the Topeka Human Relations Commission annual report is Carmen Romero Nichols, who is the chair, and Carol Roberts, who is the vice chair.
Welcome to the council meeting, and please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carmen Romero Nichols. I am the chair of the Human Relations Commission for the city of Topeka.
And I am Carol Roberts, as you know, and I am the vice chair for this year.
And the reason we're here tonight is just to reintroduce ourselves, talk to you about what the HRC is about, what we've accomplished in 2023, and what we have planned for 2024. The mission of the HRC is to conduct outreach and educational activities that promote justice and cultural understanding and improve relationships among all people in the city
So who are we? We're a nonpartisan elected body for a two-year term. We support the efforts to eliminate prejudice and further goodwill among all people of the city and promote positive relations among our citizens and guests through community outreach. We promote and facilitate public forums on issues of interest and concern, and we participate in outreach activities and public education, also partner with groups that share similar
Excuse me, I lost my page. Last year, with the help of the DEI office, we were able to accomplish the following initiatives. Initially, we had an HRC retreat where we spoke about what the mission of the HRC was about, and we formed subcommittees with the members of the HRC. We have three subcommittees that were formed: education and outreach, event planning, policy and advocacy. One of the accomplishments in 2023, as well, is not listed on the slide, but we were able to collaborate with the Greater Topeka Partnership on a couple of events when they held the small business initiative to support small business owners.
On May 18th of last year, the HRC, in conjunction with the DEI office, hosted a community forum where the Mexican consulate in Kansas City provided a presentation for Topeka residents on their services available to Mexican nationals living abroad. This forum was hosted at the Washburn Tech East campus, and an estimated 20 residents attended this session.
The DEI office, TPD, and other community organizations hosted an information session after receiving concerns and questions about the new law, the new Kansas law HB-2350. This session was held at Washburn Tech East on May 31st, 2023, and we had over 100 Topeka residents attend this session with questions and concerns.
The HRC also partnered with the DEI office and Top City Promise to kick off the first annual newcomers academy. This was an eight-week program, and 20 new residents to Topeka participated. The goal of this academy was to provide awareness of the functions and responsibilities of public entities, to foster open lines of communication between the participants and the officials, and to create a tangible knowledge base for civic engagement of those participants. And on a personal note, I would say this was probably one of the most rewarding things we did all year. It was not only fun for the participants to learn about our amazing city, but it was also fun for those of us on the HRC just to meet and interact with these new citizens.
On September 14th, 2023, and October 5th, 2023, the DEI office partnered with the United States Citizenship and Immigration Services to host a presentation for the community about the naturalization process and the requirements to become a U.S. citizen. More than 100 people participated in the presentations.
And then the last thing that we did to wrap up the year of 2023 was a fun celebration in the form of a holiday pasada. The HRC hosted its first annual holiday pasada on December 6th at the Governor's Row House and Event Center, and there were 12 people that attended this event.
Our goals for the next year is, the first one, we are in the process, well, we're helping, we're in the process of becoming, of Topeka becoming an AARP, H-friendly network. So that's in the works for 2024.
We're also participating with the National League of Cities in an inclusive entrepreneurship program, and we've received commitments to enhance the anchor procurement program and lowering barriers for, barriers for Latino and Hispanic business program.
Again, in 2024, we plan to collaborate to do another City of Topeka Newcomers Academy.
We're continuing to work with the municipal equity index report. Last year was the city's highest score, 97 out of 100, and we're hoping to continue working on this and maybe score 100 out of 100 this year.
Lastly, for 2024, we are hosting or planning to host another holiday pasada in December. That was a very fun event that we had. We're hoping to get information out a little early next time and have more people show up at the pasada. It was a really fun event, and there was a lot of really great food there.
And I would just also just quickly add that we're also looking at other events, and we're open to hosting other town hall forums, should they be needed, to foster relationships between the governing body and the citizens of our city.
That's it for our presentation. If you guys have any questions, we're here, as well as the DEI office.
Any questions for the presenter? Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure I get an invite to that pasada next this year. I saw the pictures, and it all looked delicious.
Councilwoman Hiller.
I don't have questions either, but I thank you for your presentation. I think it was wonderful. And a number of us were on the council when we updated the HRC's charter to give you all much more latitude to do what you just described, which is to, to start at the beginning of the year and settle on some initiatives that you all would, would either partner with or initiate. And it sounds like you just, you did that and had a great year, and I, so I'm pleased overall.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. If I may, I'd like to compliment the HRC for its work, and I'd also like to catch Ernesto off guard. I do this on a regular basis. I know that he likes to sit in the back, at least two rows back, and doesn't take a lot of credit for a lot of what has happened and then some of the changes with HRC. But I want to complete, compliment the entire group and Ernesto working together because I think it has made a significant change in how the HRC has been perceived and the works that it has done in the community. So thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I think every time we do this, this is a good reminder to the public that you exist. And that seems like a small thing, but it's not, because you are an outlet for us when people have, whether it's concerns or ideas or things they want to bring forward. There's a reason you are a diverse group of community members who are representative of everybody in the community. And so I think sometimes we need to do a good job, too, of just reminding people, you're there. If you've got issues or concerns or things you want to bring forward, go to the HRC. And so I will continue to try to do that and remind people that you're there to, to sort of be our, you know, come to us with those things and say, why aren't you doing this? Or we could do this better. And so, thank you for doing it, we appreciate it. And I have one question, is there still a vacancy? Said we had a vacancy as of December 20th, is there still one? Okay. Thank you.
We do have one member of the HRC present tonight. Nice to introduce you.
Oh, Zach. Is that?
Yep. I'm just here to be a pretty face and have nothing to contribute.
Good job, Zach.
That's why I said that.
Thank you as well, Zach, for serving on the commission. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just pile on, this was a great report, and really seems to be, the HR seems to be doing more now than I've seen in, in a number of years that I've paid attention. So I can relate to Zach there, just another pretty face without a lot to add, so see you later.
Well, we would just echo what the mayor said about Ernesto and his involvement and really some direction and leadership, and it, it was made possible by a combined effort, for sure, but we appreciated his leadership as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number four, the consent agenda. Brenda, if you will read.
A is a resolution introduced by councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 2023 St. Patrick's Day Street Parade. Actually, it should be the 2024 St. Patrick's Day Parade. And B is a resolution introduced by the councilmember Karen Hiller granting the Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150HC concerning noise prohibitions. C is approval of the information technology contract between the city of Topeka and Infotech Research Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $74,682.92 for professional consulting and advisory services. D is approval of an information technology contract between the city of Topeka and Carisoff Technology Corporation in an amount not to exceed $81,286.29 for professional consulting and application migration and implementation services. E is minutes of the regular meeting of February 13, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay. You've heard the consent agenda is read, is there a motion to entertain? Motion to approve by Councilman Miller. Second, Councilman, Councilwoman Hiller, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz. Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And councilmember.
Me.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we have eight. We have eight yes, the motion carries.
Motion's carried. We'll move on to agenda item five, the action items. Brenda, if you will read.
Five is approval of a three-year labor agreement effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2026 between the city of Topeka and United Workers of Environmental Trades of Topeka, representing employees of the Water Pollution Control Utility Division.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, Amanda Stanley, city attorney, and Sean Maseberger interim HR director will be the primary personnel explaining this and leading you through that
Who wishes to start? City attorney?
That's fine. This is our labor agreement with WPC. Happy to answer any questions, or Mary is not here. So there she is, back there. Mary Kuckelman and Sylvia Davis are actually who would take point on answering any questions about this.
I think we had some discussion on this prior, and so I think we're in a pretty good position unless there's some questions from Mary or Sylvia. Councilman Dobler.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I just, just wanted to say, WPC Union has been, you know, in terms of negotiating a contract, really reasonable, they, they do a great job, and I would like to make a motion to approve this contract.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second. Second by Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akala. You'll call the roll, please.
Okay, councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
And City Manager.
This is my, well, actually, it's the first city I've been in with unions, so this was my first union contract, but I appreciate everybody on both sides of the table that worked through this. It was, it was an interesting process, but everybody wanted it to come together, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I would echo those comments as well. I think Mary deserves a round of applause for, for being. Thank you for your work, Mary, and Sylvia as well. Okay, so there's no other further questions, so we'll move on now to public comment. There's two people signed up for comment. I believe it's Rochelle Hamilton. Start when you're ready, a green light will go on.
I mean, I thought that I had sent in like an email, kind of just for my ideas.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're going to, can you adjust that, chief? We can't hear you.
So I guess I was hoping that you guys would have the copy of the email that I had sent, and I don't have a device myself, but I get, so they're trying to make everybody move out of the woods down on the river, right? And I've just, I've personally been visiting those woods since I was in Sularus, you know, and I oftentimes keep a camp there since like junior high school. And I'm just pretty sure it's unconstitutional to kick everybody out of there the way that you guys are. I mean, to my understanding, water is kind of neutral territory anyways, in the area directly adjacent to it. And like I said, I had sent an email with a bunch of different ideas, but the, I think the best thing to do to remedy the problem would probably be to, like, require churches to keep their doors open 24/7 in order to get the tax break, right? Because, you know, that used to be like the thing, they were functioning as the, scooping up the bottom part of society, and so we didn't tax them, kind of thing. And then to prevent those things happening in the first place is, like, condemning people's houses because they don't have their water on instead of just providing water for the city, especially since, I mean, like, we have the right to life, liberty and property, right? So to sustain my life, I need water. It's not really practical to, for everybody to dig their own well in, in the city, it's too densely populated, and so, because people are not allowed to provide that for themselves, then in a situation like that, to not just provide it to them is kind of keeping it from them, preventing them from having it. You know what I mean? Oh, and the, and the, the cleaning of everybody's yards going in, like, I know a handful of people that that was their livelihood was, you know, it might not have been pretty to look at, but the city came and just bulldozed their yard on their property that they owned, right? And then they didn't have a means to keep up with their, you know, to keep their house payment going, so they're homeless, so, you know, to not do that, which is, again, unconstitutional of the right to your life, liberty and property. So those statutes are unconstitutional anyways. So they're unlawful, invalid, and illegal to enforce. Sorry, you guys, it's my first time doing a public speaking, but.
You still have time.
Still have a minute?
You have a minute, yeah.
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess I'll go ahead and stop there, because I don't, but I did, I did send in an email with like several more ideas, a little bit more fleshed out, I believe, so I don't know if you guys could get a copy of that, but I, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, second person we have is Mr. Henry McClure.
Good evening, your honor. I'll say a quick prayer for her. Let's reverse the curse of homelessness, in the name of the Holy Spirit, amen. So, well, anybody with the pain that she's got has that, that's enough. So, your honor, let's not forget the plight of the Europeans. You know, we fled subjugation and, and religious prosecution for centuries, and we came here. So let's reverse the curse of that, too, because we came here to have one set of rules. You know, we got tired of the crown doling out justice and injustice at the drop of a hat. And you guys don't see it, but it's what's going on today. So what we need to do as humans, voters, we need to start creating benchmarks. So the people that are so tuned in to Taylor Swift and the, the next distraction on TikTok, I mean, I think I'd probably do better if I had some dancers back here. I don't know if that's allowed, but we have to, we have to change the way we're doing things in Topeka. We've got to have a long memory. We, we've got two sets of rules, and it's the, the Greater Topeka Partnership and Go Topeka, you guys, and then us. We're down here. Anybody that doesn't think that $3.5 million for overhead on a $5 million grant, you know, I kind of feel dumb that I got my numbers wrong for so long saying it was 37%. Well, you know what? I wasn't looking at the bottom line for economic development. So we need to create a benchmark that you guys endorse 67% of the economic development go into overhead and duplication and not just going into the dirt. We've got to start getting money into the dirt. We need to create a benchmark so that nobody forgets who bought the hotel. We need to make these issues for on, on upcoming votes. You know, we need to remember who locked us down and who made us wear masks. Today, what happened in the infrastructure committee meeting was terrible. My name was mentioned, and I wanted to have public comment to, to rectify what happened. And why won't you take public comment in an infrastructure meeting? It's impossible. It is impossible to introduce new ideas into this community unless you're, you got to be part of the ruling class up here at the Greater Topeka Partnership, and then it trickles down, and then you guys do what you're told. And it's getting old. And what, what's interesting about what's happening now is there's people that are saying, you know what, you're right. You're right, just keep going, just keep fighting, keep going down there. Keep saying it, it's the truth. It's the truth. And, and what, actually, today, so look, we've got place for you for your car thing, the automotive deal out of White Lakes. After the last meeting, I went home, called John Parker, said, Henry, whatever you do, make a deal with the city, tell them they can do whatever they want. Made a little video about it, and I know y'all are watching my videos. Man, my blogs are getting unbelievable. Somebody's reading everything I, I wrote, looking for something, but that's good, you're, you're helping monetize my system. Thank you. Appreciate that. But Braxton knew that I had an opportunity, and his second-in-command just didn't acknowledge it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to public comment, move to announcements. Brenda?
There's no council meeting next week.
That's good. City manager.
Mr. Mayor and governing body, as you recall, you set up an EMS task force. We've, we've got those people together, got, let me say that, let me back up. We, we've identified people on that task force, and we are now, Caitlin is now working on a date that they can have their first meeting, and that should be within the next week, no longer than two weeks. And remember, their mission is to try and identify what is the type of EMS service that's needed in this community.
Councilman Dobler.
Just a quick question, do we have council representation on that?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
You do, you have the deputy mayor and Councilman Banks.
Thank you.
Any further announcements, City Manager? Okay. Move on, move on to Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor, just one thing this evening, my next office hours will be Sunday, the 25th, from, whatever, 3:00 to 4:30, Fairlawn Plaza, so I'll put stuff out, but that's, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller. Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akala.
I do. I need to discuss something, hopefully I can move through this pretty quick. I wanted to touch on a very unfortunate series of events happening in the Oakland community. For months now, the MTAA, the Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority, which, by the way, is a taxing entity. is a taxing entity, has been engaging in this elected official's opinion on professional community crushing and deliberate acts of non-communication. The MTAA's moves over the past several months to improve the Oakland Billard Airport have done the following. One, failed at almost every turn to meet with Oakland residents until after the fact of their changes and improvements. All appears to show through the facts that the community was not important in MTAA discussions. Oaklanders' thoughts and insights were deemed insufficient. I will remind all that Oakland has been around for generations and was annexed into Topeka in 1926, before the creation of the Billard Airport. Number two, failed to meet in a consistent way to inform the duly-elected officials of the MTAA upcoming changes to the Oakland Billard Airport. Instead, going to a couple of folks in Oakland to try and get other Oaklanders on board, with these Oakland folks having not one iota of a clue about the ramifications and backdoor politicking. Again, backhanded and not being straightforward in approach. Number three, put up what many consider, and some might even say, prison-type fencing, with barbed wire directly across the street from residential housing without a required city permit, which they will now be cited for. The neighbors are, of course, deeply concerned of their property devaluation. And the most egregious of all, effectively through lying, manipulation, running for cover whenever possible, deflection, and more, they destroyed a longstanding, woman-owned, small business, Tammy's Cafe. Tammy's will close on February 29th for good. They waited her out until she was spent. The passive-aggressive play, no communication with Tammy, a total turnaround on original agreement, because the MTAA Board determined they knew what was right for Oakland Billard and bedevied the community. None of these board members live in Oakland, and few, if any, have ever stepped into Tammy's, save for perhaps one, as the problems started to simmer. Once media and the state rep for the area became involved, then the weak attempts to listen occurred, yet nothing changed, and MTAA moved forward with their agenda. I was told months ago there was a special person being added to the MTAA Board with instructions to do what was needed to get done. I was not privy to this, and I heard this as a third-hand gossip. As a city council rep, I was kept out of all conversations and attempts for MTAA to try and get our Oakland NIA president to support this. All was done behind my back, and in a manner with the utmost disregard for the tax-paying community of Oakland. The bottom line is this: Oakland again has been disregarded, and now the powers that be are playing catch-up and extending a weak olive branch. The remedies are more dire than taking the time out of their schedule to attend last night's Oakland NIA meeting after the fact. Remedies? The fence should be taken down. Tammy should receive some type of compensation for effectively destroying her business, and some of the MTAA goodwill should directly be benefiting Oakland. As I weigh all this, nothing has been addressed. Their olive branch at last night's NIA meeting was to extend a menu to one person expressing interest in whatever type of restaurant they were replacing Tammy's with. This is exactly why everyday folks lose belief in the system, in their ability to act on their own behalf, because of those underhanded power plays to go around whoever, whenever, for however long. Stall and bites one ti, stall and biting one's time is my way of seeing what the MTAA did with Oakland, and specifically with Tammy's restaurant. Politics at its finest in Topeka. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz, you still have one?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Banks.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kell.
Just a reminder, a lot of our student athletes will be going to regionals and state before our next meeting, so I just want to tell them good luck. We have, we're actually hosting qualifying here in Topeka for the 6A bowling for this area, so hopefully we have all of our representatives in the area. We are probably pretty much one of the best areas in the whole state for when it comes to certain things like bowling and a few other sports we have here. So hopefully we have a good turnout for these student athletes' events, and they get plenty of support from, from the community. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
I would just like to second that thought. We have a lot of good basketball teams here in this Topeka city area, and a lot of them have an opportunity to do well at state, substate coming up next week. So hopefully, since we won't have a meeting, just wishing them good luck, and hopefully they can go as long as possible. Thank you very much.
I don't have anything to announce this evening. So that concludes the regular agenda of the Governing Body meeting. There is a need for an executive session. If the City Attorney will read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed two hours to discuss applicants for City Manager as allowed under KSA 754319B1. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff may be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. Enter City Manager Neinstadt and other staff he finds necessary.
Okay. Heard the motion for, heard the need for an executive committee meeting, so is there a motion? Motion to resume into, or go into executive mission, meeting, excuse me, by Councilman Kell? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Banks. I will just do a voice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no, no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz. We will recess into executive session after taking a short 10-minute break. Thank you.
Relaxed.
Okay. We've, are coming out of our first executive session. It's been determined that we need to extend our executive session by another 30 minutes. So we are going now back into executive session for a time not to exceed 30 minutes.
We do have to read the formal motion, Mayor, real quick.
Please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss applicants for City Manager as allowed under KSA 754319B2, or B1. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. Following staff may be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. Enter City Manager Neinstadt and other staff he finds necessary.
Okay. Heard the need to extend our executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
We're back into executive session. Okay, we're coming out. Okay, we are coming out of our second executive session. No decisions have been made. No further business coming for this body. The meeting is adjourned.